The day of the week for the one weeks. I'd like to make this pretty clear. America and the republic stands one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll have a moment's silence for the vacation. All right, can you give a word, I'd just, roll call for council.
Ms. Alt. Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Ms. Durbin.
Here.
Ms. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Watt.
Here.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
We did receive notification that Ms. Alt is going to be absent today. If I could get a motion to, excuse me, to, 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 to,[291.99]
Exceptionally well in each, each department doing their part of the job. So anyway, thank you. You have.
The, the next ordinance is 2023-35.
Orders number 2023-35, we have an ordinance vacating a portion of unnamed, unimproved north-south alleys to inlets 561 and 562 extending south from East Church Street. A distance of 66 feet more or less being a 0.075 acres and reserving utility easies and declaring emergency.
Thank you. I can't remember if it came to your Mike's committee or not. Yeah, it came, but I'll jump in here real quick.
It was Penns.
On what side, please?
Penns, streets alley, street over bridge, Penns.
Oh, all right, Ken. It's, it came to us through the land bank. And so in order to be able to utilize state funding, federal funding that the state allocated to each county to tear down the old East School, it was uncovered that there was a platted alley. We own the alley both ends. It's never been developed, though. And so this is really a formality to be able to allow the land bank to advertise the demolition of East Park, so.
It's a field right now, right? It's a field?
Yeah, it's the back. Yeah, I don't even know what it was. It might have been the playground, but it's, it's, um, it's never been developed. So anyway, it's, it would, it would be hard to be against the alley vacation and, and maybe the, it's the East School Preservation Society, I don't know, was irritable.
I'm going to suspend the rules and move to final reading. She made to suspend the rules by Mr. Watt, second by Mr. Bykins. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watt?
Aye.
Mr. Bykins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, suspend the rules. Ms. Ziegler?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-35.
Motion to pass the ordinance by Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Bykins. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Bykins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion, motion, Carrie. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2023-36.
Order number 2023-36, we have an ordinance to authorize me the Safety Service Director to submit an application for grant funds under the Ohio Airport Grant Program and declaring emergency.
Thank you. This, this one was voted onto the agenda tonight. I don't, I'll be right to a committee, so. Mr. Mayor. Uh, Nikki is our airport person. That is good.
I think it did go through committee. You just didn't have a number of applications, so, yeah. This is like third or fourth year we applied for this AWAS.
It's only the third year.
Third time's a charm, then. This is, we're applying for a weather observation system through our ODOT's grant program. For the time we're trying, I've been told they have a bigger pool of funds this year, so we're optimistic again that we might be awarded the money and be able to have a project in place. Um, this is on our capital improvement plan. This is, um, I think I have number two on the, on the plan. So this is something pilots have been hoping would be awarded for a couple of years now. So the application is actually next week. We've been trying to juggle, figure out what, what order we want to do the projects in, so there is a time-sensitive nature to this. Um, I think the number that the engineer got me was three, $332,500. Um, the local share would be $17,500. Wouldn't be built until next year, so it would be budgeted into next year's budget.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Ms. Durbin?
Okay, um, how many aircraft do we have a month flying in and out of this airport? Does anybody know?
I don't remember the thing over some, I don't know that we have a count, but I can get you, I can get an estimate.
Okay, appreciate that. Also, um, this is, this is for a weather observing system, an automated weather observing system, right?
Yes. So pilots would know the conditions before they flew into there.
I'm, I'm trying to understand why we keep accepting these grants and I don't, nobody knows what's really going on out there. I mean, are there a lot, you know, a lot of planes? Will the pilots use this, you know?
We have, most of the hangars are full, so we have a lot of people interested in that airport. Um, I think we might have one hangar space open at this point.
Ms. Ziegler?
I can offer a little bit of insight. Um, my nephew is a pilot and he's a pilot instructor, and so he has to gather so many hours a year and his, um, trainees, I guess you would call them, like he trains, they also have to have so many hours a year. So him, uh, when this, so he goes to OSU or teaches at OSU, so when they're closed, he comes up here, uh, because this is his hometown. So he comes up here and he actually rents planes from the guy in the airport and has his trainees come up here and has them fly around up here so that they can get hours and it also helps them get hours. So I feel like it's very beneficial, especially for these newer people, these newer trainees, these newer kids that are learning how to fly, um, to have this information. You know, I mean, they're going to be heading up this way to fly up here to know what the weather's going to be like, so.
Ms. Frank?
Um, well, I would like to say that it is called an automat, automated weather observation, observing system, which is meaning that is going to be, um, more technically advanced than anything that we have or that whatever. So in terms of safety and speaking of life safety, the helicopters come in and out of there for the hospital. They deserve to have the most updated weather observing system available. So I propose that we move forward with this because it not only benefits the people that use it privately, but it benefits, uh, the people in our healthcare system.
Is that a motion of system?
I don't think that's the main.
I want somebody to answer this. Mr. Richard?
Yes. Um, to piggyback on, uh, Ms. Frank here is that, um, I am a former pilot, okay? One of the things that this system gives to the pilots is a real-time weather. Most of the weather that is being broadcast to pilots, uh, comes from a NOTAM, uh, some weather, uh, related items from where they take off at, they monitor, that is the initial. Those are also based off of, uh, Mansfield Long's airfield weather conditions, as many of you have seen, excluding it being a pilot, is you can be on this side of Galleon and it's not doing a thing. You can be on this side of Galleon, you could be in a snowstorm, you could be in a rainstorm, a hailstorm, whatever. The benefit of this system, if we're able to get it now, again, like, uh, Ms. Ward said, this is our third time trying, is that it will give pilots real-time weather that they can actually call up on their radio while they're in the air. So that way they have a greater, uh, ability to, uh, make decisions in real-time, where in the sense of landing, uh, is the primary thing. Um, again, like, uh, Ms. Frank said, we do have the, uh, hospital running the helicopter service out of that also. Uh, the other thing is I have to say is when I started in council, approximately 10 years ago, the airport was not as, as active as a city in the community as it is now. That's what the board indicated. The hangars are full. You can drive by there and see they are full. I've talked to pilots that fly in specifically to Galleon because they like it. It's not a big airport like Mansfield Long. It's a small airport. Uh, a lot of people come through this area to go to Oshkosh, which is a big private pilot's jamboree, I'll call it that way. Uh, so many of the benefits that this would afford for a $17,000 investment, I think it is far out, it is a very good, uh, saying.
I, I do. Well, I'm just, I'm thinking that, that the airport always has a minus every year. I mean, I've, I've never seen it change. And we just keep getting FAA equipment. Well, I understand what you're saying, but will it be utilized that much over a period of time?
When you're talking about people's lives, does it really matter?
I'm not talking about people's lives at this moment, okay? I'm talking about this is taxpayer money we're spending here.
$17,500.
Well, I'm sorry, that's a lot, just like the $150,000 for the last one. I'm not talking about lives. I'm talking about we're spending taxpayer money. We have to be more prudent how we're spending our money because this airport does not seem to make any money. You just keep giving grants.
You're experts that are, have experience.
Well, it comes out in the, in the plus column this year. That's great.
Well, the only thing I would add to the conversation is, ladies, is that, uh, no, is the, the, is the airport much more closer to paying for itself, breaking even? I'd say yes. When you have a large contingent of pilots coming in and flying in specifically for fueling, uh, for having their planes hanged here, that does benefit that. That's opposed to what was at one time, which didn't have a lot of stuff to it. Uh, we have since, uh, since that time, we have added, uh, ILS specialties at both end of the runway. Uh, I think that, and again, uh, the other thing you have to understand is this is FAA, in many cases, a requirement that is part of a program that you, since we own the airport, we have to be mindful of if we would take in, I'm not, I don't know if you can even really, uh, put this off too much longer in a sense of timeframes because what happens is then the FAA will come step in and say, you will have to do this, period. And it's better to do it with a grant than to have to use it directly out of, out of some fund someplace. The, the, the other thing is, and I'll add to this, is the fact that, um, there's always an consideration of liability for not taking and putting something in out of the airport. Somebody in a plane crash out there, there is always a chance. Now, whether this is weather, maybe nothing could be something. And I mean, I, I understand your, and I agree, I mean, you always, we always are mindful of the money that we're, we're, uh, talking about, no matter if it's, if it's even a dollar, it's money, it's taxpayer money. But I think in this regard, uh, the benefits outweigh the, um, the lack of any ben, or any benefits out of it. Poorly stated, but I mean, that's pretty much.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Counsel. Does anybody got anything else they'd like to add?
Nikki, do we, you say we have, do have a time constraint on this?
Yes, that's the application is due the first week of May.
Ms. President?
I, based on that, I am going to suggest, and I will make a motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance 2023-36 to the final reading.
Motion by Ms. Richard, seconded by Ms. Frank. Roll call, please.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Bykins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, suspend the rules. Ms. Frank?
Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, to suspend the rules. Pass, pass ordinance number 2023-36.
Motion passed by Ms. Frank, seconded by Mr. Watt. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Bykins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
The, uh, the next ordinance on the agenda is number 2023-37.
Order number 2023-37, we have an ordinance permitting, order number 2022-98, determine 2023 appropriations by appropriating and transferring funds in various funds and declaring emergency.
Thank you.
You just came through finance. I was mayor, too. Explain these.
Yeah, I, I do my best on this, Carl. The, uh, I'm going to need a little help in how section six and eight are set up, so I'm looking over to the, since she really put those together, maybe I can, I'll have a little help on that. Okay, the, uh, the first one is a supplemental in Thomas's world. Uh, maybe you can explain that.
Uh, yes, uh, we have had, uh, legal expenses this year that have matched the amount that was provided by council in appropriation form and legal services line item that I have. Uh, one of the reasons for that is, in fact, the primary reason for that is the various things going on with the, uh, situation with the personnel issue that we dealt with, with the former police chief, uh, and subsequent, uh, appeal, which has been filed. Uh, the attorney, which you, uh, were, you authorized before earlier this year, uh, is still at work. He's actually handling that for us. And so it is felt that looking forward, this is the best estimate that I can give you in terms of what I think the amount of money will be that will be needed for legal services between now and the end of the year. Uh, nothing is written in stone. I will say that, uh, as I mentioned to the committee, the finance committee that I have a very good track record, and in fact, I think it's unblemished in returning money to the city every year from unspent money in my legal services line. And I will endeavor and intend to do that again this year. Uh, but this year, unlike other years, uh, it's been such a situation that we are in need of additional funding.
Any questions on that? I'll do, I'll just get to your job, Eric.
Do we have any questions on that?
All right. The next one is 48,000 that you approved last meeting. Uh, it, it needs to be in a different, uh, line item in the mayor's budget. It's not a contract service, it's a land and buildings issue. So that's, simply moves that previously approved money into the right. You can see the, uh, the, uh, object code and line items there. So that's that. Next one is, um, moving the our, our ARPA allocation into an area that it can be spent. So I think it's pretty straightforward. The language lets you know where it's going, to capital outland, land and improvements. For some reason, when it was appropriated, it ended up in materials and supplies. I owe this, that's it. And you all have to act on it because it's moved more than, it's moved out of its category. This is in no way a contract service.
Is this the money we got from the county?
No.
Okay.
This is our allocation.
We've not gotten the money from the county?
No, the, the way that will work is that we'll have, as individual projects are ready to be bid, we'll, uh, they'll actually be bid by the county and, in, in a large sense, managed by the county. So this is our, this is our allocation.
And a question on four.
Okay. This is putting money, the 150, in a position that it can be used and the Grant Road left and turn. That's what that 150 is. Six. Okay, and then six. I'm going to file this up, but basically we have to move this, the 75,000 requested by the Port Authority twice, I think. Is that fairness, is that a good way to describe it or not?
We only had $75,000 appropriated in that transfer line, so this is putting another $75,000 in that transfer line.
That makes 100% sense to me. I hope it, so there was, at the very end of the general fund, there's a whole list of transfers out of the general fund into a lot of different stuff, including the port. That had 75,000.
That's a good question.
And so that needs to be increased if you want to, to satisfy the request that they made of 150. They got 75, they, what they really hoped they, they would have received was 150. All right, that's that. And then nine is the.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're giving them 75,000, which we've been giving them 75,000 the year.
No, I think it's more than that. I think it was, uh, I think it was 150 last year. They've been, they've received, it's not right?
Last two years, it's 75.
Yeah.
Everybody's saying yes, I feel like, huh?
I think it was 75 last.
Okay.
I can't speak for the year.
So what are they, what, what are they going to do with 150,000?
The, the case that they made at committee level was that, that in order to maintain operations, to be able to pay for everything they have budgeted, they need that other 75,000. That's why I just came.
Ms. Richard?
Unfortunately, I don't see anybody from the Port Authority here.
If they move the money, why aren't they here defending it?
I have, I just, I, I have a couple of questions directly to them for, uh, to know what is that they need the extra 75,000 for? I mean, um, if they had at least, uh, I'll just use, last year, they operated with 75,000, so I'm assuming something's changed, and I would like to know what the change is.
Ms. Frank?
Does this have anything to do with the projects, the buildings, of the homes or anything? Is it have, so is it more administrative, uh, costs or?
You know, I'm, I'm.
Is there any paid?
Pardon me?
Are they paid? Because I, I, I'm wondering, too.
Well, if you read section eight, they want another, they want another 75,000.
That's what, that's the gist of this legislation.
Okay. It's 300,000. No, it's only going to be 150 total for them.
150 total?
Yeah.
Eight, 75 in the original appropriation, they had asked for 150. That request came in after the budget has passed, was really kind of on the final, it was in finance committee on its, on the road to being approved. So it got, the budget got passed with the 75 that was put in ahead of their, their, I guess, formal request.
Ms. Ziegler?
Can I ask, is this ordinance time-sensitive, any of this that's on here?
Yes. Uh, if I could speak to, Mr. President, just real quick.
Just follow.
I'm only going to speak to one section, and it's not the section that deals with my request. It actually is section three. Uh, when you authorized that agreement, the last time we met, that agreement has been reduced to contractual form, and there is a timeframe associated with that. Uh, so that is very much time-sensitive.
Okay, can I ask another question? Um, because nobody from the Port Authority is here to answer the questions that anyone has about this other 75,000 they are asking about. If this does not pass tonight, is there any way to amend this ordinance and pass the section that is time-sensitive and then have the rest of it put on another ordinance for a time that the Port Authority can come and answer those questions?
Are there any other items that we would need to close out the month?
But I would, yeah, this, this what I would, along those lines, I think what you're, you're trying to get, if you deleted the sections that affected the Port Authority and you were all right with the, with the other section, then yeah, you could proceed that way and come back. They're going to run out of money. It's not quite like the national debt, but they're going to run out of money, I think they said in October. So that's their.
So there's time.
That's their, um, sort of cutoff. So yeah, I think there's time. They, they may be at home screaming and frantically putting on a Superman costume and flying up here.
They know we have a meeting tonight.
Yeah, I think to answer that, I think that, uh, coming out of that last finance committee, I think that's when it was last discussed, there was not, there, there was, that evening, there wasn't any discouraging words or questions. So I was, since we're on the subject, I was upset, the meeting before, they came to, to Missy's meeting on Tuesday and then weren't there Wednesday, but I think they, they believed that they satisfied questions, which without getting too deep, I think they did. I think the people that were there that night, they satisfied their, satisfied their questions. Obviously, there's some tonight that didn't, you know.
Right, but I mean, you could satisfy a committee, but I mean, obviously, that's something that's on the full council.
Yeah, that's, yeah, learn by doing, this whole, this whole exercise is just that.
They talked about what the function of the Port Authority is. Yes. And the projects. Yes. Is what they talked about. Um, my question is, do we have a budget from the Port Authority that we are, have access to?
No.
No?
That, the, the correct answer is yes. The correct answer is yes. There's a port, I think Mike asked for the port.
Because maybe that would help people understand.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mrs.
What?
But, but, yeah.
An additional 75,000.
I don't want to be argumentative, but yeah, they submitted after, I think Mike asked to see the, you know, what they spent their money on, their financials. So in that sense, that gave you an idea of a budget.
And I agree with Carrie about removing sections that we're, you know, don't feel like we're having enough information to make a decision about, and then I'm voting on the ones that are, uh, that have time.
Ms. Rich?
Yes, and I was going to suggest that section six, seven, and eight are all related to the Port Authority.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be to take and remove those three second sections and to amend this ordinance and then, uh, go ahead and, uh, move forward with the rest of the ordinance, and this can come back to council committee, whatever.
Let's, let's go over section nine and then if you decide to make a motion.
I was going to say, section eight is telling us what they need it for. Community projects, transportation, street improvement, capital.
That's just their, their.
That's general, that's not really.
They, they, they need to be here to tell us what.
But it's not in section seven or six, okay?
We just, we just can't hand over tax.
I'm, no, I agree.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's review section nine, and then if you guys decide to, to make an amendment, then you can make that motion. Section nine is, uh, is 170,000.
Yeah, the, section nine is the other, not quite half of what's needed to be able to authorize the, um, the next ordinance, the mall, lightman, architecture contract. I know Carrie had asked, you know, if the rest of the money, because there's 110 of freeze dollars, but by the way, we got the check today. It's sort of like, what is that, Christmas and April or something? So Grant Garvey was in, working with the check, which has been an issue. That's sort of, I'm saying that in a happy mood. We had waited the year that we built the playground and the park. There were a couple of former council members, until that money was in there, that they wouldn't authorize the bidding and without bringing up, I don't know, sour grapes or something, the, we lost our line in the production, lost several months and ended up opening up in November. But anyways, back to the subject, this is, uh, the 170 and the 110 of freeze dollars will put us within about 12,000 or 13,000 of the, of the lump sum estimate for the contract that follows.
Thank you.
That's what this is. Matt's got some stuff for people who are interested in the facts and figures. They would show you that, and maybe he'll pass it around. It's, it's a list of the investments that the city and outside entities have made since. Gosh, I want to say it proceeds 03 and 04, so there was a lot of money spent right before the crash. So it wasn't just Pico's heart, but, uh, anyways, the, uh, so he may be passed out for the people who, who might be interested. I guess the point, what you'll see at the bottom line is the city has put in a million, 400,000, and there's a, a whole. has put in a million, four hundred thousand, and there's a, oh gee, about a third of that amount that's come from outside grants.
Tom, you might want to, I think it's sized, that this is for the depot.
Yeah. Well, I guess that was.
For the depot.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, so it's the architecture for that. Those are the various investments made by the city and outside entities. So I'm, I'm well aware that this is a, a, a large chunk. I'd say, people can disagree, that we've done all of the relatively inexpensive stuff. One of the things that, that I was thinking about tonight earlier, in getting ready for this conversation, is that we've really not spent much money the last couple of years. We've, we've not had, we've sort of tapered back. Now, the, the advocates for the, for the depot there, I think you know them on a first-name basis, if you didn't before, they're, they represent a small group of people who really would like to see that done, and I think their, I think their biggest frustration is, is it ever gonna get done? And, so anyways, the, we've done all the little stuff, and so the, the large expenses, when you, you think back to the budget that was passed out of the previous meeting, there's a lot of electrical, mechanical, HVAC, that is kind of one big lift, and we've nibbled around avoiding that stuff, but now if you're gonna do the interior of the building, that, that becomes a cost that, as I understand, is difficult to divide, and just do the first floor until we have the money for the second floor, because that would be kind of an original, you know, that might be something, as you start to look at it, that you would wonder at. Anyway.
Are you talk, are you talking about doing the depot in phases?
No.
No? Okay.
Only, if and only if all of our outside money is, ends up being fairy dust. And then I, you know, I honestly, I'm, Matt and I've been working a lot, we're kind of on the third iteration, Plan C. What you see is Plan A, Plan B is a little, requires probably some borrowing, so I don't like Plan B real well, and we're starting to think of Plan C, and that's, that's if those assumed amounts coming from state sources don't, don't end up being.
Okay, you mentioned that.
Yeah.
We got a hundred thousand from Ohio Development, you were asking for six hundred thousand.
Yeah, we did. That's from the Ohio Capital Bill.
That hundred thousand is part of this?
Yeah, that's in the, excuse me, it's in the sources that we've already booked as, and I think, I think to avoid borrowing money, we're hoping to get three hundred thousand out of the next capital bill. And, and, and our plan is to use that on stuff that we would see being constructed in, after July first of twenty-four, because that's when the new fiscal year, state fiscal year, the money would be available. So think of the, construction of the parking lot, any exterior improvements that aren't there, that's the kind of things that we'd use the capital bill for, that, three hundred thousand.
Okay, so the ultimate goal is to finish the depot, and you're going to, to rent spaces, is that the, so we might get some money?
Yeah, so the two, that's a good question. The two primary rent drivers, I think there'll be a third one, but that is a little bit loose, guy, but I'll go through them. The, the two primary ones would be monthly rent from SCAT, and the second one would be monthly rent from tenants, office sharers. I don't, I don't think we know exactly what that mix of tenants would be, if there would be a lot of people coming in there in the evening and, and moving their cottage business into something other than the living room or the kitchen. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to attract social service agencies, which are, there's a big imbalance in terms of access to service between Gaiyan and Ucyrus, and so if we can get a few rent days there, I think what we'll find is that there are, are, in the medical field, entities that can come up, the folks that helped put together the health fair.
You had also discussed.
Yeah.
An elevator for the ADA.
Yeah, 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 and that, that, I don't know. I, I think it's, I think it's a reality, I would, sorry to say it spiked the cost, but I don't know. We were probably, we were more in the wishful stage, and we're getting to the point where we're deciding what we're gonna build, so it's, and, so anyways.
Ms. Frank.
I would just like to say, in review and looking at this, and this is being, has been worked on for twenty-three years.
Back on, okay. Yeah, I suppose, yeah.
My feeling is, I'm very much in favor of the renovation of the depot. I think it would be, you know, very much an asset of our community in terms of economic development, provide opportunities for some service-oriented businesses to be in there, as well as tourist attractions. So I'm gonna say that, they've already spent twenty-seven years. I want to say that, I think that we can, we should help, we should pass this and help them with this funding, so we can get this project going and completed.
As old, as old timers are hopeful we get it done before, before we kick out, but it is, I mean, it's been a, it's been a really long time, so I, I'm.
Why, yeah, let's, let's move forward. These guys have worked so hard on this, and living here, and close to the depot, and going up there.
The excuse was for fourteen years, we're in fiscal emergency, keep that in mind.
It was, there's no question about.
Okay. This is the, this is the good thing, but it's not gonna happen overnight.
I think, yeah.
It's, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot of money here.
Yeah, I think the, the, the question I thought I'd be, I'm all ready to ask, or answer but wasn't asked, is where that one-point-two-million local money, if you look at that, that spreadsheet, and I think there's, I can detail that out. I did talk about the three hundred of the capital bill future. What I would, the, the largest amount of that is, we have about nine hundred thousand now in the capital, in the permanent improvement fund.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the, that's that big white elephant, the, the HDI building, so they gave us, so we've got all of that money, so we have about nine hundred thousand commitment for some roadway projects, I think we just talked about. And, and so I'm really penciling in six hundred thousand of that. So it is a big, that, that enables us, I, I, with any kind of luck with the state, or we earn that money, then well, that'll avoid borrowing. I think that's real important, to avoid having a long-term debt. I, anyways, I'm sorry, Carrie.
That's okay. I just wanted to make a motion before we pass anything to amend this ordinance and remove section, Ms. Richard.
Alright, motion to amend this ordinance, removing section six, seven, and eight, by Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Frank. Roll call, please.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Mr. Vodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, before we get too crazy about the depot, that's, that's a good move, but the, another thing I wanted to say about that is that sometimes it seems to me that you spend a lot of taxpayers' money, and you regret it a little bit, and maybe y'all haven't had that experience, I'm just trying to be honest enough. I think what we'll find with this, when it's done, and whether you're driving by it for two years, or forty years, or, or whatever, you'll drive by that, it's like, yeah, it's probably pretty good, because the people have been at it for twenty years, remember what helpful it had been left when the freeze dollars were first committed to acquire it. It was a fucking joke. Yeah, so anyways, so I think it's a good thing. I don't, I don't think anybody will, will regret being associated with it. Yet, the very last thing I wanted to say about it is that, real mindful, I don't, Matt and I don't have this worked out entirely, but we've got to come up out of the cash flow. That's where if we can eliminate debts, real important, because, well, how are you gonna pay the debt? Well, with the revenue coming off it. But it's real important to accumulate a capital reserve fund, and, and so that when the roof, which is getting old now, has a major blowout or something happens, we aren't, not necessarily us, but the next counselor, five, seven years in the future, it's like, wow, these guys, they thought they were so smart. Now we've got buckets everywhere, and, and nowhere to, no reason, or excuse me, no way to prepare it. So we're gonna work hard between now and when the, the rest of the bidding comes forward, to come up with a way to fund a capital reserve fund, because that's, that, you know, this is, it's important on a new building, but an old renovated building, I think, it just seems to me to be a good idea, save headaches and.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Ms. Dobbins.
I'd like to thank these people from the depot. There have been so many projects that people come up here to council, ask for something. You're the only ones that ever show up and represent yourselves, and I appreciate that. Yeah, there's a lot of things to process, and nothing's ever said. You guys show up, I think it's a real proud project. Just let it fall down eventually, we don't do something. I believe there's a lot of things we've done with it, and I appreciate you being here. You work hard at this, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes, unless there's any other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to move the amended ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-seven on to the final reading.
Alright, motion to move to the final reading, suspend the rules by Ms. Richard, seconded by Mr. Watt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Vodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Motion carried, suspend the rules. Ms. Frank?
I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance. On twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-seven.
Motion to pass ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-seven, by Ms. Frank, seconded by, the second, Ms. Richard. Any further discussion? Yes, pass it as amended, yes.
Pass it as amended.
Yes, it hasn't been amended on the floor. Right. So any further discussion or roll call? Roll call, please.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Vodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next ordinance is twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-eight, in power, ordinance authorizing the safety service director to enter to agreement with Mall and Life and Architects Incorporated for professional architectural engineering services related to the Big Four Depot renovation project in the starting order.
Thank you. Alright, we talked a little bit about this at the end. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mayor?
Not really, I think the, I think we're, we're just getting into the actual work with them, but I think our relationship's been, I think, been pretty positive. Their, the, the, the increase in cost, if people have been following this in their mind, or have seen the prices, really has to do with what Ms. Durbin was pointing out, when she mentioned that the elevators included, the extra engineering, and some architectural piece. You can see right where that contributed to the increase in this final cost. The, passing this tonight, or as soon as possible, we would, if it passes tonight, we would likely authorize the contract tomorrow in border control, and they would start designing the, the five, the plans. The, the biggest, oh, I want to say timeframe that we need to meet is to meet ODOT's and SCAT's commitment to spend the money on that first floor. So what'll happen first, kind of contrary to typical, is they won't start on the second floor, they'll start and finish out, and so there'll be construction above the, our new tenants, but that's, that's kind of how, how it's gonna have to be. So anyways, I don't really have anything else to add.
Ms. Frank.
We're happy with them, and we hope we finish up the project smiling and shaking hands and feeling like it was worth all the, the time.
Thank you. Ms. Frank?
Oh, I was just gonna say that, I mean, I think that this is just part of, you know, the renovation of the depot, and it says right here that it's gonna be made from the depot fund, so I'm not really sure why we wouldn't want to move forward with this tonight.
At this moment, we need the depot fund, except a hundred and seventy thousand. Okay. So we got a hundred and seventy thousand in the depot fund, and the architect's bill is tuned to ninety-three thousand. We're gonna need extra money going to.
Well, like I said before, the, Grant Garbick brought the check that has the other hundred and ten thousand, and then the twelve or thirteen will be the, the sinking fund, the mayor's contract services budget, where the forty-eight thousand came from. So that 'll get us covered. It's kind of patched together, but I think by the, the time the contract's signed, the money will be put in place in the depot fund, and we'll be in terms of cash flow, and it should be alright. We will be alright.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Watt?
I'm moving to suspend the rules, I'm moving to the final reading.
Alright, motion to suspend the rule, then, Mr. Watt, seconded by Mr. Vodkins. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Mr. Vodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carried to suspend the rules on twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-eight. I can never tell if you ever hand that, is that in the air, could've got your hand up?
Oh, yeah.
All night, Ms. Frank has been like this, so. Mr. Richard, or unless Ms. Frank had her hand up.
I, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
Motion to pass by, by Ms. Frank, seconded by Ms. Vodkins. Do we have any further discussion on this ordinance? Roll call, please.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Vodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried.
Thank goodness we have the comic relief.
Well, we're on, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash six.
Yes. Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash six, in power, resolution authorizing the safety service director to contract for the disposal of unneeded personal property owned by the city's government, the fire and emergency.
Thank you.
This is, we're trading in cars. This is, we're trading in cars. Oh, okay. This isn't the internet auction. Oh, okay.
Yes, this is different.
Okay. Sounds simple.
Ms. Ward, do you want to review this one for us?
I was just gonna say, this is a really project anyhow, just, probably should just go around, eat it just around the night, yeah.
Yeah.
This is, we're trading in two very old, non-running PD cars on two new-to-us undercover vehicles for them.
Alright, thank you.
If no one else has any comments, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash six to the final reading.
Motion to suspend the rule by Ms. Frank, seconded by Ms. Vodkins. Roll call, please.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Vodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rule, carried. Mr. Richard?
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution twenty-twenty-three dash six.
Alright, motion to pass the resolution, twenty-twenty-three dash six, by Mr. Richard, seconded by Mr. Watt. Any further discussion on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Vodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
Your motion carried. The next business is other business. So we have the, the calendar for May. Anybody'd like to go first?
Oh, well, this was on the eleventh or sixth thirty.
Eleventh to six thirty. All right, thank you. Ms. Ziegler?
Please fire an help is on the eighteenth at seven.
Eighteenth at seven. All right, thank you. And Mr. Watt?
My name's on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth to seven.
Right.
Thank you. Ms. Durbin?
Parks committee on parks representation will meet on the tenth of May at 7:00 p.m. here.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one more thing.
Sure.
I'm asking the mayor to submit his resignation for the fourth time.
Thank you.
For the health and safety of the citizens of the alley.
Okay, Mr. Richard?
The law ordinance will be on May second at seven o'clock here.
The second, seven o'clock, thank you.
And I, oh, sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
That's all, is, uh, in charge, uh.
Economic.
Oh, Ms. Frank, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Economic Development Committee will be on Tuesday the sixteenth. There's five Tuesdays, so, you know, I confused. Tuesday the sixteenth, Julie?
Yes.
Okay. Tuesday the sixteenth.
Ms. President, for.
We have utilities.
Right, and that's Ms. Al's chair as a member of that committee. I'm sure it will be on May third, which is a Wednesday at seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Frank?
I was gonna ask, Carrie, what the date of the airport? They didn't write it down, I'm sorry.
Oh, you mean please fire now?
Please fire now, okay.
That is on.
May?
Yeah, May eighteenth.
All right, very good, thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Mr. Saville?
Thank you. I presented to you the monthly reports, the meeting reports. The first page is your revenue report at 2.5 million to date. And I will say that, yes, the check came today. It's not shown on this because it'll be posted tomorrow for today. So if you look in the, on the cash, statement cash position under 405, which is a free fund, it doesn't show that there was any revenue, but that will change tomorrow in the report.
Thank you.
Expenses are at 1.23. We're right around 30%, 31% on revenues, or 37% on the expenses year-to-date in the statement cash position report there. We are hopeful that the reconciliation will be, will be done fairly soon. We're waiting on, on putting a couple of things into the system. The target is, is pretty good. And I will give that information to Ms. Ward, so if she can review it. Also looking on going over the, the budget and the line items and seeing where there's some, some potential issues. And I hope to have that information to Ms. Ward and the mayor so that we can get the finance. I mean, some of those small things taken care of, or some of the big things. There's a few issues that we need to get fixed, and we will get that presented in very timely fashion. Any questions?
Ms. Durbin?
We're still spending more than we're making, right?
That's a great question. I would say that the simple answer is yes, because you budgeted more than you were really getting, so.
So it should, it should catch up as the year progresses, hopefully. I know you're a forecastor, but.
I will go back to, I mean, the expenditures in the budget, the overall budget are more than the expected revenues that were coming in. I, I think that's, that's a, if you look at actually what's going to come in, that did not, that doesn't take into account the carryover that we had, so. I mean, month-to-date, I mean, we've expensed 1.2 million and we've run in 2.5, so we've actually doubled our revenues for, for April. And that's with another 400,000 on, on the books tomorrow, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Palmer?
Ms. Porter was in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry, I. Ms. Porter.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Do you have anything?
I have nothing.
There's nothing, okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, just really quickly, three words of thanks. Always leaving, giving thanks when it's due. Thank you for passing legal services fund. That's an unnecessary expense. Thank you for passing the forty-eight thousand the way that you did. That ties something up that needed to be tied up. And thank you so much for, you know, I, I'm very careful not to urge you things while you're considering them, but as someone who's worked in downtown revitalization for the last thirty years in the eye, I'm thrilled about what you did with the depot, sadly supportive of it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Yep.
Gosh, I don't know where to start. 598 will start up pretty soon. They have to be at a sustained temperature, I believe, above forty to put down the service course. So we're gonna see it start a little bit sooner. There is a meeting, a conference called a step-two hearing on some claims filed by the contractor on that. I believe that's the 21st or 22nd of the month. And so we're employing a couple, you know, a handful of resources to try to limit our, our exposure to that. So we'll see how that one goes. The other stuff I kinda let out of the bag as we, as we went along, the freeze dollars. So next Parks Committee meeting, we'll have a couple, or maybe three of those projects ready for bidding so that the, the discussion about bidding the parking lot is gonna come up. I think what we intend to do is bundle or put together the pickleball court and the parking lot in the one sale. Try to get contractors to look at not just two little projects, but a couple of little projects or a couple of medium-sized projects. So that, that one will be coming forward.
Will that include that daycare section also?
No, they're taking care of that on their own. They're, they're, and at once upon a time, the pickleball was gonna be a Y project, but I think that it shifted over and it's gonna be more of a city project. So if that's that, we, it either made the calls today or we'll be sent to the two most likely suspects when it comes to paving that we expect to be below the $50,000 bid level. So the Amix Drive or, I don't know, up the name after someone, something. But anyways, from sixty-one back to the, to the, what Josh Keeler calls the dam and I call the bridge. So Josh is the guy that runs the water plant, so he sees it as a dam. But up to that point, probably no further. And given the, sort of an overall look at the water fund, we're, I doubt if we do the dam, the, the road part of the dam. So those are, gosh, it seems like three or four freeze projects and all the asphalt stuff. We aren't gonna bid our own streets, but we're gonna bid every other piece of asphalt where we have money. That's that. A bunch of stuff will happen at utilities that I'll talk with, care about, but, but there's a need to move a few projects along and update you on, on how things are going. I, I don't know.
Any hotel updating, Mayor?
Oh, you know, thank you, yes. The, the transition of the actual management of the hotel is upon us. I know that's why Jack Harpist is here, is concerned about that. We'll have a, a manager. Our hope, our expectation is that there'll be a HUD certified manager, and, you know, we'll let you know by Thursday. I know that doesn't, the rent's due on Thursday, is it at four o'clock?
Rent was due on the first.
Oh, okay, all right. So that, that is gonna transition, and, and we think we'll have somebody in place that is, that will take over that, the duty, at least, the duties, at least on an interim basis. Thanks for reminding me.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes. I have a few calls, I'm concerned citizens about some problems we've had, and I've had to use Mr. Palmer, Nicole Ward, and Matt Hecqelberry, and they did it very fine and fast and handled these in a couple, three days. They called me back, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Frank?
Oh, I was asking about the HUD certified manager. Who's the person here from?
I just live there.
Harvey?
I live there.
Oh, you live there, okay.
They called me as the door man.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I, I couldn't do it. I'm HUD certified, and if I know somebody that is, that may be interested, unless they already have somebody.
No, I think getting the, the, right over there, the talkative one, Ms. Ward, is who you should channel those, those names, those referrals to. We have some leads, we're gonna talk to some people. But we're not, but we're not, we don't even know if the people are dying to have the job or, I don't know. But they haven't avoided us, we'll see how it goes.
Can I ask something?
Yeah.
Wait, I say something? Again, the current manager, of course, Thursday's her last day. She told me that is not HUD certified.
She is not, or it is not?
It is not.
It's not a HUD housing?
That's, that's what our current manager told me.
Okay. I, I talked to Debbie too. She is not HUD certified, but the Fair Housing, she is certified by Ohio Fair Housing. Now, the other manager that was there was HUD certified. But Debbie is not, but she comes under Ohio Fair Housing. They're the ones that implemented, implement HUD's rules in the state of Ohio, and they come in for inspections a couple of times a year.
Okay, well, our building is HUD certified as well, so we have the REAC inspection once a year. So I, there's different entities of.
There's, there's a lot of.
Correct, and so I just, I'll call Nikki, and if I can help you, I know somebody that might be interested as an intern.
So I could've said that, like a parrot, Matt Mocking a parrot. I have no idea what HUD certification is, but. So there you go, Paul.
It's very lengthy.
Pardon me, it's what?
You're going through the, pretty much the FBI to get.
What else?
It's very, yes.
Do you have anything?
They need me doing.
Not that I can say.
But the, the new self is got something as well.
Well.
Ms. Ziegler?
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual.
And Ms. President, you need either Ms. Ward or myself in there, I believe. If necessary, I need both of us.
Need a second, first.
Could you, could you?
Don't even begin.
That motion was made by Ms. Ziegler and seconded by Mr. Richard.
Yeah.
Before you said that, could I just have second word?
Sure. Yeah.
I wanna thank the council for your actions tonight and what you're doing for the city. And, I mean, it has been a long process at that train station, and it's been pretty dark at times, but I feel like the lights turned back on. So, you know, our whole goal is to make a showcase for Gallyon, and what you've done is gotta get us back on that, that direction. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
We appreciate your guys' perseverance or sticking with it for as long as you guys have stuck with it.
Yeah, it's, it's been difficult sometimes, but it's been fun too, so. Thank you.
Worked very, very hard.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
You need to have a vote.
Yes, thank you so much. I'd like a roll call, please.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Watt? Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Motion carried. Eight, eight twenty-three, we'll move into executive session.